Didn't know what an SRO was. When the mayor called me, I thought, now, what are we getting into? So, I, of course, Googled it and found out all about it. And it is really a good thing and very impressive. And I really like the fact of how an officer on the campus does make the kids more familiar with that person and would make them go to talk to them where maybe they would never approach another officer. But who wants to take the ball and tell everything?
I'll start. Thank you, Mrs. Sevold. I think I mentioned my letter. This all started probably a few months ago when we met with the Board of Education and talked to Superintendent Bill Cedar. And so, there was a meeting, I think, prior to the Chief and myself, meeting with Derek Fisher from the Career Center and Superintendent Cedar. And so, we met this last week. And the idea is to explore the idea of having a full-time police officer, and this is, thank you, Janice, a school resource officer in the schools. And we're talking about a campus activity out there. So, it would be both buildings in the Career Center structure out there and the high school and middle school. So, it would really be four buildings within the realm of this school resource officer. Last spring, for a short time, I think, Chief, Terry, two and a half weeks or something, we had a uniformed officer in the Career Center. It was something that they had requested. They did reimburse us for that. In talking to Mr. Fisher, he felt things went very well with that. So, Roger, I'd like you to come up now that we've, they've had an opportunity to kind of read about it. I think in your packets was that model draft of that contract we had with the Career Center. This is something that they would pay for. Schools, 180 school days a year. The idea would be that they would pay their fair share. And Roger will address, I think, one of the things, Roger, is to talk about when school is not in session and that sort of thing. So, if you would kind of pick up. I think this is our first effort to bring this to council's attention, to see if this is something that the city would be interested in.
Thank you, folks, for having me. Basically, as Mr. Mayor said, this is kind of a groundbreaking for us in Mount Vernon, but this is not groundbreaking for schools across the state or across country. So, we think it's going to be a very good idea and a very good resource to use an officer in the school full-time. But his duties are not quite the same as a regular police officer on patrol, although he is in uniform, he is armed. But his position's more of a staff position at the school. He will help, you know, with the students and things along those lines, help educate the students. And I talked to you folks before, I believe, about the Alice training we have going on for active shooters in schools. He would take the ball in teaching that and students along those lines. And as Mr. Mayor said, the school's definitely willing to share the cost of that. And then, what we have to decide is then what to do with the officer, obviously, after the fact. I think he should still continue as a, more of a PR officer and maybe have him in a split shift or something along that line, get the bicycle patrol back into active use, work the parks, because the summertime is when he's going to be off most of the time from the schools. So, I'd like to see, you know, we've got Foundation Park growing, Memorial Park with softball season kicks in. So, we look to use his resources towards there and anywhere else that we can utilize him as far as that goes. We're on, since we're on the ground level, we're still learning as far as the actual job description, as far as what he would be involved in. So, I'm kind of going to open the floor up to you folks and see if you have any questions specifically about what this is, and I'll see if I can answer them the best I can. And, you know, if you have any thoughts or ideas or things along those lines.
Chief, I noticed that on the website, there apparently is a National Association of School Resource Officers?
Correct.
And it looks like they do training sessions. Is that something that?
Yes, we already, we already have slotted a spot for an SRO officer. And we have an open slot available. We have actually kind of taken a step to pick an SRO officer, because we don't want to be behind the gun when, you know, approval comes down. So, we've already gone through an application process where we've had the officers fill out a questionnaire, so we can pick the right officer for that position. And they've put in applications, and we have five candidates so far, and each one of them been really outstanding choices.
So, then you would use an experienced local officer and then fill in behind, wasn't it?
Correct. The officer that would be a resource officer would not be a rookie. He'd be, he'd be a veteran officer that already has some experience, because not only on the side of helping the school with, you know, getting to know police officers and feeling safer on campus and things along that line, he also will handle situations on the school grounds. So, if there is a crime, things along that lines. And we are at the high school, middle school, you know, several times a week during the school year. And this would actually free up patrol officers from having to handle those calls. The only way, you know, an officer would have to go out there would be as a backup situation, you know, or desist and things along those lines.
So, they'd have an office or could have a base at least on that campus somewhere?
Well, those are in the preliminary stages, but yeah, we talked about a work area for the officer. Being that it's combined with the three campuses, we haven't decided where the base is going to be exactly. We're assuming it's going to be the high school. But yes, he will have a work area, which would be also a place that the kids know to go to try to find him, you know, and things along those lines.
Thank you.
Chief, the school's in session, as the mayor said, 180 days. Usually, a work year is 260. You know, that's about an 80-day difference, you know, minus vacation and all those type of things. So, it's not quite a third of the cost we would have. So, you know.
2080 hours.
Where does that fit into your, into the budget, number one? Number two, if they're going to go out and replace the officers that's going out now for a call, is there an issue with good cop, bad cop? Usually, the, you know, when you're out there, they're trying to have that, build that rapport with those students, and then if they're going to go out and hammer somebody for something they did wrong, is that an issue?
No, because addressing that issue directly, the officer's still a police officer, okay? But, you know, so he's not, he's not going to not handle, you know, crimes or deal with crimes accordingly. Where this will come into effect is, I've always said, in my experience, that I deal with 10% of the public all the time and 90% very few. This is a time where the officer is going to get to deal with the 90%, so that they kind of understand, as they become young adults, you know, what police officers do and how to handle themselves around those type of situations, and they actually make them feel safe against the other 10%. So, they're still police officers. They're not a dare officer, they're not a counselor, although those will be similar functions that they would handle. But to answer your question, they're still a police officer.
So, since- To the budget issue, I-
To go to the budget issue, I think we can fit it into the budget, depending on what the split is between the school and ours. I think it's very manageable. Terry Scott would have to give you better numbers.
Chief, let me say something, because we didn't have it. Terry was good enough, and I think you have a sheet there. This would be a rookie officer, not the one that we would send out to the schools. But as the Chief said, so that would be a number that we'll share. Plus, there is another sheet that may have gotten turned around that's more complete for a seasoned officer and based on his pay. The cost of that is, and Terry had that, and it may have gotten handed out, so one of you may have-
We only got one.
Pardon?
We each got just one copy.
Okay, but there is a different one that-
Were they on the back?
It wasn't on the back. I only had one of those printed up, right? I didn't do a whole package, and I don't know whether it's in or not.
And the, the school will be paying the rate of the veteran officer, where we will be paying the rate of the new officer.
That's a difference.
So, you know, the veteran officer's probably going to be closer to top pay. They're going to pay that rate, okay, what that officer's worth. And obviously, then we have to pick up the rookie cost of a new officer.
So, maybe $20,000.
Yeah, that'd be a round, round figure. Like I said, I haven't specifically, because we haven't talked in exact dollars yet, I can't give you an exact figure on that, so I don't want to, I don't want to ballpark too low or too high.
I don't want to get in negotiations either.
Right, right.
There's no negotiating with them. That's not our role.
They're all the same as what we've done.
I have about four questions here, real quick. My first one, I'm not sure, but what maybe it lies with what we're, what you were just answering, but I was wondering about the benefits. Will we be picking up the benefits or will the schools be picking up the benefits? And will those be divided?
Okay, the benefits, the officer will be paid like he works for us, period. The, so the benefits will all be on us, but the totality of the cost in general will be broke up with those included. So, whatever the school pays, however we break the percentage up, the benefits and everything are included. So, it's not based solely on the officer's wages, it's based on the officer's worth to the city.
Total dollar value, okay. Another question is, what about the anti-door lock or the auto door locks that I've been seeing on television that some of the schools are beginning to use, that if there's a problem, the doors automatically lock?
There are some schools that have that system. We do not have that, although the doors do lock there and they do make, make sure they're secured once school starts.
Yeah.
And actually, that would be a job of the, of the SRO. He would be security in that fashion. So, when school starts in session, he will make his rounds.
Check the doors.
You know, make sure the place is secure and the entrances that are supposed to be open are the only entrances open. Along with, that goes kind of into the Alice training, where we're in works of surveillance in the schools and things like that for security, intercom, communication systems. That's not really into the SRO program, that's into totality of the school on their security in general.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good thing. What will the ranking level of the officer be?
Patrolman. It will not be, it will not be a ranked officer.
Won't be a sergeant or captain.
It won't be sergeant or corporal.
Okay. What about the drug situation? Will that be, will there be an effort to curtail that through the use of this officer?
Oh, absolutely.
And is there a possibility that a K-9 unit could be coupled together with that?
A K-9 unit would be used as a resource for that officer, but not, not as that officer's tool in general, because a K-9 unit has so many other functions, you know, search and things along those lines.
Sure.
So, we wouldn't want to limit that resource strictly to a school.
Okay.
Okay, so, but yes, a K-9 would coincide with what he does when needed, just like other officers or anything else.
Okay.
Mrs. Carl, we have about two more minutes.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Real quickly. I see here that there's going to be some, some of the work they're going to be doing is going to be providing community-wide crime prevention presentations. Is the person that is going to be part of this program, this patrolman, going to have those kind of speaking skills to, you know, to do those kind of things?
Yes.
Because, you know, like, if they're going to be on the staff, then most staff members in the school have, you know, those kind of training in order to make presentations.
Absolutely. Obviously, with the process we're going through now with the questionnaire, and the questionnaire we used to start the process was an SRO questionnaire that other schools and places use. So, that, hopefully, that'll help us to pick the correct person. And obviously, continued education will be-
Water plant, both maintain their Class III licenses and be in responsible charge of both of those plants, which, which would then allow the utility director to administer the whole department. So, I guess I just wanted to bring you up to speed on that. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Is there a possibility, then, that the individual who has been good enough to be helping us out and doing the job now might be a possible person to have that job?
Sure, there's going to be several of those people, so, yeah. And, and he is a good individual. He is, Matthias Orndorf has managed the department since she retired in early May. And he actually, in order for us to stay in compliance until this new permit is issued, he actually applied for his Class IV permit. And he has been given permission to be the operator of record for the wastewater treatment plant during his training period, and that's what he's in right now. He'll have to serve that training period for two years if we were to stay at Class IV plant.
I think it's only fair to an individual, when they're good enough to do the job when, when needed, that they, they certainly should have the opportunity to have the full-time job.
Matthias has always been a good employee.
For the future. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it? Okay. I did, I saw maybe the mayor had something to say. So, with this position, you're saying basically we're holding off till halfway through 2015, correct?
Well, we hope, I mean, we, we just got this notification about 10 days ago. We hope to set up a meeting with the Director of EPA and see if they can, can't push that up their schedule a little bit.
And a Class III is better than a Class IV?
A Class IV is the highest classification of wastewater treatment plants in the state. So, the person who, right now, the person who operates our sewage treatment plant for 16, or 25,000 people could go to Cleveland and operate the plant that serves 2.5 million people. And so, one of the things that originally took us into Class IV was the scenic river classification. So, we're held to a little higher standard than a lot of cities.
Oh, okay.
But even the EPA is telling us now that they don't believe that we meet that classification anymore, but they have to go through this process.
So, we don't have to have it, and so, it means it may be less money could be expended?
Well, I'm not, you know, I'm not a sewage treatment person, so I don't know exactly what the process is.
Okay.
Sam, are you going to talk about the other items, the repairs at the water treatment plant?
Yes. Can I follow up on what I was doing there? Follow the questions? If I could, real quick. Finish what I was doing, I'm sorry. So, with this utility position, with Judy being gone, does this, where's this put us financially, where we were, where we are now compared to where we're going to be as far as the status, you know, the dollar-wise for positions? Higher, lower? Are we saving money, spending more?
Should be just about a wash, right? I mean, there's no extra people, Mr. Orndorf has been doing it. In fact, if you remember that original piece of legislation, we only authorized him for a month there. And we need to go back and consider that. He's been doing his job now for four months.
So, there will not be a net addition?
Overall, in the big picture, no additions, right?
Because that position that was once held by Judy Scott will become the utilities director position.
The wage associated with that position.
Exactly, that's what I mean.
Thank you.
So, now, we're going to be talking about some projects that are on the horizon.
Some projects. And that's the bigger picture, too. We have several very large water projects that need to be done. I could start with the 2 million gallon buried water reservoir out on New Gambler Road. A lot of people don't even realize it's out there. It was put out there in the early '60s. It's a cast-in-place concrete vault. There's actually two big chambers. And we've had it inspected, and there's significant deterioration in it, which you'd expect after 50 years. So, in the grand scheme there, we've got about, hang on just a minute, about $800,000 worth of repairs that need to be done out there. That's one of the big projects, and that buried water tank serves as, basically, as the water tower for the rest of the city.
So, you said 2 million gallons?
Yeah, it holds 2 million gallons.
Back comparison, how much does the one like out there shopping center hold?
400, 450,000 on Coshockt Avenue.
So, this is much, this is five times the size of that.
Right, right. It's, it's two huge buried chambers up there. And it needs a lot of work, you know, the valves and those things sit in the water for the last 50 years, they're rusted, and the stairs and the vents and the side concrete walls are showing deterioration. So, all that work will have to be done. And, you know, like I said, that's about, estimated at about $800,000 right now. We also have the two clarifiers, which don't mean a lot to you, but at the water treatment plant, they are the large circular that look like drums. Those are called clarifiers, where the lime is added to the water and the water is softened. Their concrete so is showing significant deterioration, and we've had those looked at. Those are each, I've got to go back to my notes here. The project is estimated at $1.75 million.
Total.
Yes, for those two clarifiers. Now, we have a situation there where we could do one at a time and limp along for a few more years. One of the big things to put in the back of your mind is that our $16 million loan for the water treatment plant has three and a half years on it, is that right? Until that's paid off. So, that's something to keep in mind, because that's almost a million-dollar payment that we make every year.
1.3.
1.3 million? So, that's a major expense we have at the water treatment plant. We also have the equipment that actually makes the chlorine dioxide that clarifies the water before it goes out in the system. It needs replaced also. But that's only about an 80 to $100,000 project. So, you can see just by the numbers we've mentioned so far, there's a, what is that, 3.5 million dollars almost? Or 2.5?
2.5.
Yeah, 2.5.
But the interesting, am I not correct in reminding ourselves that on the wastewater side, we have a built-in rate enhancement that is salted away for repairs? We don't have that reserve built into our water structure.
We've been very conservative on the water side as far as not spending a lot of money, because we've been in this 1.3 million dollar debt for the last 15 years or whatever it's been, 16 years. And we actually work a couple people short and have minimally raised the water rates only when necessary.
Yeah.
We also have two other pretty good-sized projects. There's an area up in Clintonville, up along Mansfield Road to the north, where a section, that Clintonville subdivision, that Fairgrounds and Mansfield Avenue, be northwest of there, there's two or three streets over in there. The water lines were put it back in back in the early '60s, and we've encountered some corrosive soils up there that actually deteriorated the, is starting to deteriorate the water lines up there. We haven't seen a lot of that around the town, but up there, we've seen it, cameras had the pipe tested, and it shows the deterioration. Those water lines do need replaced. That's, again, it's going to be about a million-dollar project. We haven't really done any plans on it, so we haven't estimated it, but it's right in that ballpark. And then, we have another major water line project out in the Merida, Highland, Hillcrest, Verndale, Vernonview, that, well, not Vernonview, but Terrell, that drive area was all built about the same time, late '50s, early '60s. And we've had a lot of water line breaks in that area, and as close as we can tell, the reason for those is they, the lines were poorly installed, without enough bedding and not enough security around them, and that soil out there is all very heavy shale. And anytime you have these freezes and thaws and major movements in the ground, these water lines will break. So, I guess maybe why I'm here tonight, to tell you that there's about 4.5 million dollars in projects that need to be done.
Mr. Glass, what would you say the total time horizon on achieving these projects is? Five, six years or more or less?
Well, that's one of the situations that the Water and Wastewater Commission has discussed a couple of times. You know, we could take them one at a time and borrow and get those things done, or we could attack them all at once on one big borrow and absorb the payment, limp through this next three and a half years until we, you know, until that first debt is all paid off, and we're in decent shape then. But what I'm saying, though, is that it will probably take a rate increase on the water side of somewhere between 5 and 8%. But my, our suggestion, like Sam was trying to tell you before, is to specifically designate that to these capital projects, so it can't be spent anyplace else.
Which is what we do with wastewater and its work to our great benefit.
I know these are boring stories, but now it's up to you.
No, no, but, but this is, this is what's important to our community, the infrastructure, and I think the citizens recognize that that is so crucial, above and beyond anything else that we do here. And so, Sam, I think you're going to have to be-
I see Nancy's got a question.
He's going to be a great-
I think that's a good suggestion, to just go after them all at once.
So, a 5, say a 5% water increase, how many dollars is that generating a year? Do we have any idea?
Well, it's about, isn't it about 3.5 million that they take in in rates? So, 5% of that would be 150, 170 million? 170,000?
We raised the rate last, what, a couple of years ago?
I wish I'd have brought those. I'll bring them next time, but we did not raise it this year and didn't raise it last year, I don't think. I think it was two and a half years ago.
So, it's been longer than, but it was a couple, three years ago.
Well, to touch on what Sam has talked about in regards to the setting aside funds to help fund a, quote, "capital improvement fund." On the water side, the structure and the allocation has never been designed in that fashion, but wastewater, it has been, and it works very well. We have made significant improvements at the wastewater treatment plant over the years without having to raise the rates. Now, we did have to do that here a little later as we took on this major, about $6 million improvement project. But just over attrition, it just sits there in the fund and grows until we have a need to make an improvement. And the water side is very, very weak in this arrangement. So, I would suggest, counsel, when you get to this point, give consideration to making this a set aside of some allocation to create a capital improvement fund. Now, let me caution all of you, and Dave was talking about these repairs and things that need to be done, but, but before anyone gets alarmed as to if something were to severely happen to our water treatment plant currently, what kind of a position are we in to take care of that? That was structured in, in 1999, when we took on the second half of the debt issue to build that water treatment plant. And the requirement was, is that the city had to set aside a half a million dollars into a reserve for equipment replacement or improvements during the operations of the facility, as long as those bonds were outstanding. And again, we're still through until 2018 before they complete themselves. So, we have, from time to time, tapped into that half a million dollars, made those improvements that needed to be done, and then reset the fund back to the half a million dollars. So, there's no jeopardy to the bondholders in risking the operations, there is no risk to the community, we certainly have proper funds, but they're restricted strictly to that plant. So, and, and the dollars that Dave was discussing, a half a million dollars wouldn't get you too far in what we have to do in these future projects. But be aware, there is currently funding on hand for emergency repairs if the plant requires them. Filter media was one that we have replaced since we've been out there. We're currently working through the electronics of computerization. There's, all of those electronics are now 16 years old and need to be updated. We're working through that right now, and so, we have tapped into that improvement fund to make those work. So, hopefully, that gave you some background on all of that.
Thank you.
Terry, how quickly can we move toward securing the bonding while the interest rates are so low, because they've already started to move upward?
Correct. There are some limitations as to how long you can hold bond bunnies before you actually make improvements. There are very stringent things called, where they have to do a calculation, is if you're going to hold those funds for a period of time and earn interest on them, then you have to watch to make sure that arbitrage rebate doesn't kick in. And that's the calculations between what you borrowed at and what you invest at. That's part of that calculation. The second part of it, which is the more critical one, is how fast did you burn down the money? You cannot hold that money for an indefinite period of time into the future and say, oh, three years from now, I'm going to make this project, but I borrowed the money today. That creates arbitrage rebate, and then, of course, it requires you then to have to pay money back to the federal government. So, we're always cautious as to try to time those about when the projects are going to happen. And in this case, like I said, we've got to be careful, because this is a utility-driven operation. If we elected to use revenue bonds, you would be pledging the revenues of the operation in order to make the payments. And until this water treatment plant gets kind of off of our books- And until this water treatment plant gets kind of off of our books, we're kind of tied as to how much more debt we can take on for that facility, okay?
I think, thank you, Mr. Scott. I don't want to incur Mrs. Carl's wrath, that we're eating into her time.
I'm certain.
Unless there's any other urgent questions.
We can continue with this at another time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're, thank you.
We'll adjourn, we'll adjourn that meeting of utilities, and we'll move on to the parking, parking company lot under Parks and Lands of Mrs. Carl.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hawkins. So this committee meeting is to discuss the ownership of the final parking lot in the city that belongs to the parking lot company, of which Mr. Hillier is acting president. And so, from what I understand, as told.
Just as a note, Mrs. Carl, because of Mr. Hillier's position, he is not permitted to take part in any of this discussion, either formally or informally.
Okay.
So that he will not be recognized to speak at all during this part of the meeting.
Okay. So I'm going to let the mayor and, and our city law director, Mr. Boren, discuss this, the ownership, because what, we don't have any legislation yet, and from what I understand, they want to, to hear from us what we want in that legislation, and so.
Thank you, Mrs. Carl. This has been talked about, seems like, for a long time. This is the lot that's come, Mulberry, it's on the west side of the block between Vine Street and Gambier Street, it is on the section faces on Mulberry Street. It's been used as a free parking lot for a number of years, and it has been owned by the parking company, and they have been paying the taxes on it. As already stated, the Mulberry Street lot, over on the west side of Mulberry Street is ours and leased to the parking company, the, the Melbourne News lot, that we all call it the news, but it's a parking lot, it's a city lot run by the parking company, and then the one at the corner of South Main and Ohio Avenue. So this would be the fourth lot joining those three, of which the city would own, and we would then lease it back for operation purposes to the parking company. It is, without question, a critical lot. Having done business downtown for 25 years, I know the importance of parking in an open lot like that and free parking. It seems to me that the city should be interested in maintaining that, I think this is one way to ensure the future use of that as a, as a free parking and public parking lot. I know there was a question, Terry can address that, everybody knows that when we, when we get a piece of property, we still have to, to pay the taxes, it is not automatic exemption. So somebody still has to pay that first year of taxes, and I think it's somewhere near $4,000. So the, the idea would be that if the city takes us over, the parking company would be responsible for that section, and Terry, I think I'm correct on the information that I'm presenting at that point. So that's kind of where we are. I would, at least in my opinion, I would recommend that city council consider taking over the ownership of this, this lot. Nancy?
Didn't the city own this some years ago and transferred the ownership to the parking company, if I remember correctly? I think maybe that happened.
I'm not sure I recall that, Nancy. I know we consolidated it maybe 15 or 20 years ago, and, you know, there used to be a service station down there at Gambier Street.
I think maybe we owned it at one time, transferred it to parking.
Do we? I don't recall that. I mean, we can research it, so.
Yeah.
It doesn't really matter.
There was a, when I had the store there, we rented spots, and Mrs., or Mr. Eberhart had a lot, narrow, it was actually in between the two lots, and that was a private section, and I, I think they traded some of that off to make that all public through there. But I'm not, I guess I can't comment on like David before my time.
I'm not positive either, it just seems, I seem to remember that.
So, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, if I understand your description here, this, taking this action would bring it in line with the other lots?
Be the same status.
That we currently own and lease to the parking company?
That's correct.
So we're not breaking any new ground here, we're just consolidating the ownership style of these lots?
Yes.
And they're going to pay the 4,000 for the first year, so basically this isn't going to cost us anything?
That's correct.
Well, I think that that's what the mayor has recommended, and I think that that would be the prudent way. We just need to make sure that that's included in the legislation when we draft it. I think that Mr. Scott at one point had talked about possibly putting that money, having the parking company put that money into escrow, so that we knew it was up there, so there wouldn't be any questions about what would be happening.
Some of that will probably work out at the closing, right, Terry? Because they'll have to, they'll have to make the past taxes good up to the closing date, so.
Yeah, they'll have, as is with any transaction of real property, you'll have a closing, they'll have accrued real estate taxes up until the date you make the transaction, they'd have to make that settlement, pay those in, and then the balance forward then would come through to us. And normally, what normally happens is you have a purchase price, and then you get a credit as the acquirer, you would get that credit. So when you go to the closing, make your purchase of property, actually you're paying less money at the time you make the purchase, but you're going to get the full tax bill when the bill comes. This is going to be a little bit different arrangement, because there is no sale price, okay? So the offsets of that will have to be worked out into the closing. But clearly, the second half of that is, is that even into the next year of acquisition from the city, you know, the parking company, we could craft it such that they, they would give us a reimbursement back on that, and it could be done over the two halves, so it's not like they would have to pay all of it at one time, wait till the bill comes, and then pay part of it, when the next bill comes, you could pay the other half, and settle up that way. Once we secured it through for one year, then we can begin filing for future exemptions on the property.
What are the terms of the leases that we currently have with the parking company? And what, what do they include? Do they include provisions for maintenance, insurance, what have you?
The parking company maintains.
Yeah, they're, they're written, so the, the parking company does have, and that's a major expense, as you know, is, is snow plowing and the, the sealing and resurfacing and all that, but yes, that is their responsibility.
So the main, the main objective here is to provide the parking company, which operates on a shoestring anyway, some relief in the area of taxes?
Right.
Is that right?
Yes.
And that's the only change?
Yeah, because they're still going to be moving forward.
I think it sounds like a great idea, Mr. Mayor.
But the only problem is, is I know that, that some of us are aware that the Melbourne Parking Company has another opinion about, that, of course, Mr. Hillier cannot express here, about those taxes, and so I don't know if, if they're ever going to be given the opportunity to, to speak to this body, or maybe, maybe it's not appropriate for them to speak to this body.
No, it is that another member of the parking company certainly could come and speak to this body, but this body has the opportunity to say under what circumstances they would receive this.
Okay.
And the, and the city certainly has the right to say that, you know, if you want to us to take on this burden and as part of that, that you're going to have to take care of the taxes that were due during the period of your ownership.
Just to make it clear, I think I asked this last time, but if we lease it back to the parking company, and even though we own the property, our police have no enforcement rights as far as hours and things on the property, is that correct? Since it's leased to them? That's probably a Rob question.
We, we do not enforce those sorts of private contracts. We can enforce certain types of traffic laws, like if you get in, if there's an accident that occurred in one of those lots, even though it's private property, there are a number of different traffic things, such as failure to control or failure to maintain a short clear distance, that we could certainly charge someone with. But as far as the, you know, the regulation of the hours or things like that, no, we would not do that.
Just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Even though I, I hear we have in our voice any hours, perhaps you could talk with them, the other parking in our downtown area is two-hour parking. If we had perhaps one lot, that lot, at three hours, so that when persons do have business to transact or, or a luncheon or something, they could park a little longer in that lot.
You know, I think that lot is three hours. The, we have two hours, three hours, and four hours on Mulberry Street and Gay Street, so that's four hours, but we do have, and it was actually, it's that way, Nancy, for exactly the reason you're stating it. People want to take lunch, they want to visit, sometimes time slips by, so that's, that's why it is. It is, and they, the parking company does pay a monitor for that purpose.
Yeah, I know, they do. Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you. Is that, is that it, Ms. Carl?
That's it.
Okay. We are adjourned from committee meetings, and we will resume our legislative portion of the meeting at 7:30.
Okay.